Two ways to exit the chambers. My left to get exit through the council chamber doors. Turn left, walk down a flight of stairs, turn left again at the base of the stairs, and outside of the building. Or the best way perhaps is the rear of the chambers through the double doors down the stairs. In either case, once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the building. Secretary, take the rule.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Nick LaFicus. Absent. Mary Scott. Absent. Ken Nelson. Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar is absent. John Petronella.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
I'll point, alternate Petronella and DeGray is sitting. Let's see. Approval of minutes June 27, 2019.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any additions, errors, or omissions?
No, I was late coming in, but I did watch the part that I missed, so I feel I can vote on it.
Okay. Anything further? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven zero zero. There's no one in the public?
There's no public.
There's no public.
Must have been.
So we can move on with that. If there's anyone here that isn't here, is welcome to talk. Okay. Old Business AR 00510 Legaway. Application for Aquifer Protection Registration for Regulated Activities Over an Aquifer. Rock Ridge Realty LLC. Owner Henry Grodsky and Company Incorporated applicant.
So basically, this, the applicant, applied for registration for regulated activities over the aquifer in January. Their 180 days to come before you was up in, I believe, July. At the end of June, you had given them another 180 days to complete the registration, which involved also moving into the building and distributing their application materials to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, the Water Company, and the Department of Public Health. And they distributed the materials, but they have not moved in yet, and they're not sure if they're going to go forward or not. And without that site inspection, we did reach out to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, the Aquifer Protection Division, and they said that the site inspection is required. So they recommended that if they're not ready to go, and we gave them, or you, the commission gave them, an extension at this point, that they should probably just be denied, and then they can reapply at a later point when they're ready to go forward. And I talked to the applicant's engineer, and he seemed okay with that course of action as well. So I provided you with a resolution at your desks this evening, if you guys wanted to take a look at that. And that's that.
I just have a quick question.
What?
When you said they're not sure they're going forward, does that mean that they don't think they're going to do the business in town?
That was the sense that I got from the engineer.
What's your desire, ladies and gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we accept the draft resolution as prepared by staff dated October 24, 2019.
Well, let me close the hearing then, if that's what you want to do. Then I'll...
The registrations aren't public hearings, but...
Isn't okay. All right, I'm sorry then.
And the motion to deem the registration incomplete without a site inspection report for regulated activities, production or fabrication of metal products over an aquifer at 10 Legaway, Rock Ridge Realty LLC, owner Henry Grodsky and Company Incorporated applicant, map 75, lot 104, I-1 zone, that this applicant be denied?
Second.
Motion's made because of the lack of moving forward on inspection, that the application be denied. All in favor? Any opposed? One opposed?
I think staff worked very hard on this, and it is no reflection on, it is on. I think staff worked very hard, and my no vote was not a reflection on staff. It's just, it's kind of sad that we probably could lose a business because they didn't understand about the aquifer and didn't, weren't able to comply. So that's why I voted no.
Well, also, we can't comply. If it's not there, we can't inspect.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah, I don't think it had anything to do with aquifer. They were perfectly okay with the aquifer application. I think it was something else internally that they were trying to figure out.
Six zero one, any offer? Okay. Now, what? Any new business adoption of the meeting schedule for next year?
Need a motion?
Oh, yes.
I make a motion that we adopt the 2020 meeting schedule. I believe it's the fourth Thursday of every month at 6:30.
Second.
Because the only question I have is, I noticed that it had December 24 as one of the meeting dates, and were we just, were we just going to not put that in there and just keep say, no meeting held on that particular day?
Well, that means you also probably have a P&amp;Z meeting that day, and I would suggest that you might want to move both of them.
Right. Yeah, I...
Not the 24th at least, but you should have a meeting.
You'd better bring us presents.
Yeah, if you guys want to make it...
We have other times has moved the meeting to be there before or after the next week.
I have a question. I thought that the aquifer was quarterly.
It's once a month.
Oh, it is once a month.
It's once a month. It's scheduled for once a month, the second meeting.
Oh, okay.
Unless, and most of the time, you're notified it isn't being held.
Okay.
And that was the way it was voted initially, was that it was going to be scheduled because the state wanted it scheduled.
Okay.
And if we didn't have it, we didn't come. That's what we did. But we have to have it on a schedule. And that's why we're meeting tonight. But what do you want to do about the 24th? Because...
I think I have a call that night. I won't be here.
Me too.
Well, see, that's what I mean. I don't think anybody, but you either go the week before or the week after.
Well, I think the week before makes some sense, because the week after is going to be New Year's Eve night, so I don't think that anybody wants to come here on New Year's Eve night, which is going to be, you know, the 31st. So I think that, you know, if we're going to make a modification, we should make it to December 17.
And who would else would be meeting on the 17th? We could have, we could meet down, well, you could meet down in the lower room.
Maybe, maybe if there's no other buddy using that room, so...
Well, Wetlands meets, oh, Tuesdays.
Who else meets Thursday?
I'm not sure. I thought that maybe it was one of the town committees, if I remember.
We got bounced from the first and third to the second and fourth because of who?
It was, it was because staff wanted a stretch. It wasn't because of anybody else.
Yeah, it was Wetlands. Yeah, they jumped on our meeting night.
They want, they, Inland and Wetlands said that they couldn't change their meeting date because they would lose all, most of their members, and staff wanted to stagger.
No, when I said, when I said staff, I meant that in the past, it was always first and third for both Wetlands and, but because of the paperwork and stuff, they thought it would be better.
All right, let's, what are you going to do about the 24th?
So you can probably move it to the 17th, and we would, we would just have to figure out the room situation, which shouldn't be too difficult. Then you would have two meetings in a row.
What about in these, in November?
November, actually.
Thanksgiving, if it's the 5th.
Well, they already got that on the 19th, so it isn't.
Is it?
Yeah, that's...
So that's skipping already.
Okay, so the only one you want to move then is December. Will somebody make a motion?
I move we accept the proposed calendar dates for 2020 for the aquifer meetings, with the exception of the change for December from the 24th to the 17th.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion further? All in favor? Okay, that's done. One other question. I don't know, I don't know if there's anybody here on the 4th of July.
Oh, I have to withdraw my motion.
Yeah.
I withdraw my motion to...
I'm sorry.
And I accept Ginny's motion.
So kind of you.
It's okay.
Okay. All right. Fourth of, well, I don't know.
Fourth of July is not interfered with now, because it's the 23rd.
Well, yeah, but they don't meet on the 4th of July. I'm talking about the affair that they had out here.
But that's, that's usually the, the week and after the 4th, so it wouldn't be the 23rd or whatever it is.
Okay, I just call your attention in case. Okay, then I...
They've got enough time, they've got a new dance hall if they need it.
Okay. Okay.
We could have a meeting during the Taste of Enfield. That way, we get free parking back here.
That's right.
After the meeting.
Then we can go eat.
We've had it when they've been setting up out there, and it's a little crowded too, so either way.
That's it.
No, where else?
Correspondence.
Any correspondence for aquifer protection?
Uh, nope.
Okay. And commissioners, correspondence, none. And now Kenny.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
And, uh, I guess we'll have a, the country, during the lesson again.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, foundation, under government, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Case of fire, there are two way steps in the chambers, and there are left exit, and a couple doors, turn left, walk down, five stairs, the base of stairs, again, turn left, and go directly outside of the building, or perhaps the best way is the rear of the chambers, through the double doors, and in both cases, I'm sure outside the building, please walk the same distance away from the building.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Yeah.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar is absent, and Richard Suzak is here.
Two minutes of October 20, 2019, regular meeting.
So moved.
Baca.
Any errors, additions, or amendments? None, all available in the minutes. And the laws, the members, all on.
I, I did watch it on TV.
You're not sitting at this, uh, [inaudible].
Oh, I was, I watched it on TV, so that's why I voted, it was okay.
Seven, seven zero. Uh, at this point in the meeting? The planning, zoning commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in the town of Enfield, from anyone who's present, provided you may not discuss any matter of business that's elsewhere on this agenda, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone would like to address the commission under those conditions? Anyone would like to address those, the commission under those conditions? Hearing then, uh, we shall move forward to, yeah, uh, to, uh, public, I'm sorry, to the bond releases, which there aren't, and next would be the old business. And I guess I have here a request to continue until November 14th, I don't have that, the last one I have is October 24th. Do you have the, the letter?
It was on the table.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the request for a hearing extension for a public hearing, 2946, until November 14th.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion? What's the time schedule on this? I mean, we keep giving extensions, extensions.
Um, they do still have time for extensions. Um, I don't know off the top of my head exactly how many days, but I did do the calculation before I, um, sent him this form to fill out. Um, so he is still good, um, and I believe in talking to him that he should be ready by November, so. I also advised him that there isn't a second meeting in November.
That's what I talk about, on, uh, getting the agenda stacked up with no action on it, it really shouldn't happen, but he'd rather withdraw without prejudice, and then he can come back with any payment or anything else, but sort of, then you don't know what to put on the agenda or not, if they're coming in.
Uh, well, we do, we do reach out to the applicants if they are on the agenda after every meeting, so, there, we, we do like to get status of them to make sure that it's just not open-ended.
Because he doesn't lose anything if we go to, you know, without prejudice, he can come back. It just doesn't gum up our procedures. All right. Uh, how do we vote? Do we vote right? Huh?
Oh.
Okay, the motion's made to extend. Hall in favor? Any opposed? Is it unanimous? I guess I did, okay, Ginny, I didn't see your hand, that's all. Okay, uh, new business. Secretary, please, uh, this is public hearing, 2955, 20 Palumbo Drive, secretary, please read the legal notice and take the roll.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, November 24th, at 2, 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, public hearing, 2955, 20 Palumbo Drive, special permit application for a car wash associated with the Lea Honda dealership, WL Realty Limited, owner, BBL Construction Services applicant, map 57, lot 335, business region, business regional zone, um, Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
And Richard Suzak's here.
Okay, if the applicant's here, please introduce yourself.
Good evening.
My name is Tim Kuhn, I'm with JR Russo and Associates, here tonight, standing in for my partner Dana Steele, um, and here to represent the applicant, BBL Construction Services, for their application for out at Lea Honda. I'm not sure if anybody in the audience is concerned with this, but...
Well, don't turn it too much, because you have the camera that's going on TV.
Okay.
So you gotta turn it, there you go.
There you go, perfect.
Gotcha. Uh, this application concerns, uh, 20 Palumbo Drive, which is the location of Lea Honda, uh, where they are, do auto sales and service, uh, the site is about 4.76 acres in the, uh, business regional zone. Um, it's abutted by other, uh, automobile dealerships to the north and south, I believe Home Depot is behind it, and other commercial activities across the street. What is being proposed is a 15-foot by 36-foot car wash to be located at the rear of the building. This is Palumbo Street, and here's the rear of the building, the yellow box is the proposed addition. Um, this will be in an area which is already impervious, uh, so there will be no change to the impervious coverage, uh, no change to the drainage system, uh, there will be a minor increase in the building coverage from 12.7 to 12.9 percent, which is still less than the allowable building coverage of 25 percent in this zone. The, uh, car wash will have floor drains inside, which will discharge to a, two oil-water separators and series, um, requirement for this type of operation, which will then discharge into the sanitary sewer on-site. We do have architectural elevations which were submitted. If that stays, um, the addition itself will only be 14-foot high, um, smaller than the existing building. It will be constructed of insulated metal panels, and the color will be a regal white to match the existing building, the existing being white. The car wash is being proposed as an accessory to the dealership, and only cars sold or serviced at this location, uh, will be run through the car wash, it will not be open to the public. This application was reviewed by town staff, uh, there were no engineering, or I'm sorry, no engineering concerns, no comments from the health department or police. Um, the fire department did recommend a condition of approval requiring the demarcation of a fire lane, uh, around the addition at the rear of the building, uh, with signage and striping. Uh, we have no problem complying with this condition, be happy to do that. Otherwise, uh, we believe this is a sip, fairly straightforward application, and I hope that you would approve it this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
There's a notice on the, I don't know when this was received, on the fire department had concerns, uh, about, based on current parking, uh, an arrangement be at least 15 feet by the proposed wash shed, and it appears that the currently provided 360 degrees fire department access to the building would be greatly hindered, if not eliminated.
And Dana did speak with the, the fire department on that, and I believe they agreed that they would put condition of approval, because there is still going to be, uh, significant amount of area between the addition and the back, and we would just, we would stripe that as fire lane, to make sure that no cars were parked back there, to, in order to maintain that fire access.
Yeah, because they're concerned, I, I don't know, do you have this?
I do not have that.
I don't know the date of it.
No, but I, Dana spoke with them about it, though.
Because it also mentions, uh, maintaining, uh, I guess, striping, uh, turning radius for the largest fire apparatus at the town has.
Right. Yes.
I believe it says if they stripe.
Yeah.
And do everything, they're okay with it.
All right.
Providing that they stripe the parking lot and make it a fire lane, that they're good.
Right, I didn't know if he'd had the notice of. Okay. Any other commissioners?
So, I do. So, would this be considered legally a fire lane, which is enforceable by the local police as other fire lanes are?
We're just gonna do what the fire department tells us to do, I'm not really certain what and how it's defined.
Thank you.
Well, we will work with the fire department in putting together the required striping or signage, whatever they require.
It may come in when they do the, uh, review anyway, uh, before they, they issue the okay. That's what we're told a lot of times.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
The, the fire department has its sign-off on the CO anyway.
Right.
So, they'll have a chance to review and modify if need be.
Yeah, though, when they come out of the finals, okay. No further questions for the commission, anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against the application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against the application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. Hearing none, anything further from the commission or, uh, staff? Hearing then, then I shall, shall close, 2955.
Mr. Chair, I move that, for the approval of the resolution to approve public hearing, 2955, dated October 24th, as prepared by the planning department, with the 25 conditions indicated, plus we're gonna add an additional site-specific, um, condition for, you know, fire department access around the building shall be maintained and striped with the proper signage provided, you know, at that location for truck, 360-degree truck access around the building.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, 7-0-0. Uh, public hearing, 2956, 651 Enfield Street. Secretary, please read the legal notice and, uh, call the roll.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, October 24th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, public hearing, 2956, 651 Enfield Street, special permit application for the expansion of a building located within the King Street, Enfield Street design overlay, Elian Lamb, owner applicant, map 32, lot 25, BL Zone, Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Is the applicant here? Oh. I think the tripod, yes, you're right. That's, cameras can pick up the... It doesn't sound like it's working.
Good evening. It's not working, okay. I'll just speak while I'm done. Thank you. Okay. Um, my name is Greg Neffinger, I'm the architect for Lilian Lamb, who is the owner of the property at 651 Enfield Street. Uh, this building was originally a Dunkin' Donuts, uh, the last tenant there was a salon, and Lilian would like to continue, uh, salon use at the site. Uh, the modifications we're making is that in the corner of the building, there is an overhang that's not enclosed, and we want to enclose the overhanged area. Uh, so if you look at the building, you'll see to the left, from Enfield Street, you see on the left, there's an enclosed area already underneath that was added on at a former permit, and we want to continue that enclosure, uh, to the corner. Uh, so that's the extent of the project.
Questions for the commission?
Look, I just have one question, in terms of, I guess there's a lot of discussion about parking and, and the, the direction of, uh, car traffic, and the fact that, you know, you're trying to, I guess, route everyone off of, you know, Enfield Street and, and up on William Street Extension, so, and they would have to go around the entire.
That's because there's a light out there.
Neighborhood, right, but...
So, William Street Extension is a one-way street.
Right.
Going this direction, so, uh, right now, the entrance is shown from Enfield Street, the existing parking is at an angle right now, uh, and, uh, people were in previously exiting from this, so we're not changing the parking arrangement from what the previous salon had.
Okay, and, and they have, you know, total access along the William Street Extension onto the William Street, so that, you know, both areas of parking can get out?
So, anyone who comes in from Enfield Street is able to get out onto William's.
Correct.
Street Extension.
Right. Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at your, your, I guess, representation of an access point, and, and there's, there's an access point, I guess, to the south of, there's two access points.
That's correct.
All right.
Right, from William Street, yeah.
Correct, so there's more than one access point?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any further questions from the commission? Okay. Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against the, this application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. Hearing none, then I shall close, uh, public hearing, 60, is it, I'm sorry, 2956. For the wins. General intonation of motion, if any of you have one. Nobody has?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for the approval of the resolution to approve, um, public hearing, 2956, dated October 24th, as prepared by the planning department, with the 34 conditions indicated.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? I think it'll improve, really improve the looks of the building, from what I saw of the design, and, uh, it'll be nice to see that building in use again. So, welcome, welcome to town. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay. 2958, secretary, please read the legal notice and take the roll.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, October 24th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, public hearing, 2958, Zero Spear Avenue, special permit application to unmerge two lots, Gaetan Terrano, applicant Terrano Brothers Construction LLC owner, map 20, lot 52, R33 Zone, Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay. Applicant here, if you will introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Gaetan Letourneau, Letourneau Builders. I'm here to propose to unmerge a lot of record on the south side of Spear Avenue. The purpose is to generate residential building lots serviced by Public Stewart Water. The lot is approximately 2,900 acres and our 3200 square neighborhood. Neighborhood has a median area lot of 6,795 square feet, a median lot, median lot of 765.
Can you just turn on your microphone? We're getting signals from down the hall.
Isn't there another one on the table over there? Oh, okay.
Do I start all over again? No. So, there was, on the town map for wetlands, it does show that there, it's a wetland, wetlands area. We do have a letter from a soil scientist saying there's no wetlands in the area, there's houses all around it, every lot in that whole area, there's homes there. On the map, we have the calculations for the lot areas and the median lot area for the average was, like I said, 6,795 square feet. If we split the two lots, they're gonna be 6,250 square feet, which is within the 10% guideline, I guess, for you guys to be able to modify for the regulation of 3.20. And then the average frontage is 65 feet and after we cut the two, we'd make the split, it would be 62 foot, 5 inch, or 6 inches, which is, you know, 96%, so that falls in that 10% also. There was a lot about 15, 18 years ago, this parcel 20-273 and 274 that was unmerged and that one had a frontage of 60 feet. So, it has been done in that neighborhood already, you know, previously. I guess that's about it.
Questions for the commission?
How deep are the lots?
100 feet.
100 feet, okay.
So, they're 100 feet deep, which would give me a buildable square of 42 by 30 with setbacks, which would come out to be 1,260 square feet of buildable area and per code, I have to have a minimum of 800, so we can definitely fit in that box, no problem.
I just have one question, because I was over there today, there was no house over there, was, I mean, I saw a wall, like a retaining wall or something, but that house is long gone.
Yeah, I don't think there ever was a house there, it was just a garden.
Oh, is that what?
The one guy that actually owned the three lots and a house.
Oh, okay. I was just curious because guys were like digging like crazy over there and I'm like, ooh, they're cleaning, they're clearing it.
Yeah, there was about 40 100-foot tall pine trees that were there that he took down because I'm sure the neighbors were thrilled about it because they were messy and they were big and they were very nice.
I'm sure, but I was wondering, because I saw like a retaining wall or something, if there was a house there.
Yeah, I think he had a garden there or something way back when.
Right. It's been a long time since I went down that street, that's why, thank you.
Anyone else?
If this lot, if we, if it gets unmerged, will it meet all the setbacks?
Yes.
Okay.
We're actually, already have a permit for the house next door on 41 Spear Avenue. We actually, that's why the equipment's there, we're actually getting ready to dig that hole for that, for that house.
Thank you.
Hearing none, I shall close, or anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against this application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. Hearing none, I'll close 2958.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of public hearing 2958 with the resolution as prepared by town staff dated October 24th, 2019 with the 13 conditions listed.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion?
I think that it will be in keeping with the neighborhood and it will look lovely when it's done.
Anyone else? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. Seven zero zero.
So, there's gonna be three new houses there? There's gonna be three new houses there?
Yeah.
Good, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Other business? Anything? Any correspondence? Director of Planning report?
Last week, two assistant planners and myself attended the Southern New England American Planning Association Regional Conference. It's held, it's, the region is Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and Connecticut and it goes around to each state, each state sequentially through, every year, so next year it'll be in Massachusetts, I mean, Rhode Island. This year, well, it was in Massachusetts, but it was in Springfield, so that was almost like Connecticut. But I did attend a mobile workshop to the Insa Cannabis Company in East Hampton and this is one of these places that grow, well, they grow and they actually produce and cook, bake, create oils and have medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana for sale and they have the retail sale onsite as well. It's in an old factory, so, and I think all three of us attended the workshop in the morning regarding, you know, creating regulations for this. I think everybody believes that Connecticut is leaning towards this, so it was a good experience, you know, it wasn't just taking a tour, it was seeing how the security works and the lighting and the smells and how they, you know, keep the odors out of, well, so you don't smell it outside of the building. So, it was pretty interesting. You know, I did some other social equity workshops and some RFPs and, and I know the ladies went to some AICP trainings, but it was good. Let's see, we're making headway on the Enfield Square, working with the owners on a contract per se. It's not really a contract, but they want to make sure that the town is on board with the way they want to operate their business, so, once we get a little bit further, I'll be able to talk more about it with the commission and hopefully I'll have an idea as to what exactly they intend to do with the mall. Some of it is very proprietary, so I can't really say out in the public at this point, but soon it should be disclosed, so. We did postpone the municipal economic development training to November 21st. It really is geared for commission members to go to and it usually is quite entertaining, but also interesting and it teaches us all how we can all play into the economic development role of the town and, you know, how, you know, how people perceive the town and staff, commissions, and so on. So, if you could make it, it would be, I think you might enjoy it, actually, so. That's November 21st.
What time?
I believe it's at 7:00. I think we're gonna send out a reminder soon because a lot of people haven't responded, so. That's about it for now. We're busy.
Charlie. You had stated how they control the smells and stuff like that inside the facility. I'm sure you're aware, when you drive through East Windsor and you drive by that field where they're growing the hemp, the smell that comes off of that field is atrocious.
I've heard that, I have not witnessed it.
I have and, you know, you can drive 20 miles down the road, your truck still smells and, you know, a couple of concerns are if a police officer were to walk up to your vehicle with that smell in it, he's gonna think that you've been smoking. And another thing is, what about the residents who live directly around these fields? I know farmers have regulations for like pig pens because of the smell and stuff like that, but that's something this commission's gonna have to look at because if you go down Harrington Road, I believe it is, that field, it's just, you're gonna look around and think there's a thousand skunks there and it's coming off the field and the people, you know, the people have a right to complain, it's, you know, I built my house in cow country, the cow smell was there before me, this is a new smell and it, the people are gonna be coming to us pretty upset when it starts coming to Enfield, so.
Another thing is, it does permeate your clothes.
Absolutely.
And you go to work and you work in an environment where you're drug tested, you're walking in and your boss is just smelling this, it's kind of, we need to think about those things.
Yeah, so, so.
That's what I've been asking, but you haven't gotten anywhere.
Right, but all very valid points and Massachusetts regulates the outdoor growing of hemp and/or marijuana to the point that you have to be so many miles or so many feet away from a residential district or something like that, so, I mean, we could certainly look at that when we start creating our regulations.
But I know the...
The majority...
It's concerning the farmers too, because we've had the farmer in from Middle Road a couple of times, so there's, we'd have to, you know, complain, come here.
Well, I mean, they're growing it in East Windsor right now, so this is something that we really need to address now.
Aren't they growing some in town too?
They're growing hemp.
They're growing hemp. There's no THC in hemp.
I believe they are, but, you know, if you don't smell it, it's, you know, like she had said, if you got the buffers, it's no harm and, you know, what Linda was saying is, you know, yes, there's big signs posted, written in spray paint that no THC, you're not gonna get high from this, but the smell is the same and when you do walk into work and you have that smell on your clothes just because you stopped at three stop signs right in front of the field and your boss is gonna look at you, yeah, right, you don't smoke. Yes, you may have to be drug tested and you're gonna pass, or so they say, you know, but it's just something that I think we need to address before people are in here.
All I'm saying is that there's, the farmers also have regulations on various things too.
Right.
And before and I don't know them.
Because along that line, I know that all the facilities that are growing, you know, medical marijuana in the state of Connecticut right now have all indoor facilities, so they're all controlled.
Exactly.
And they all work year-round and not necessarily, they don't have a growing season, they have, you know, whatever growing season that they, they have, you know, cultivation areas, they have growing areas, they have harvesting areas, so, so they cycle all their products from place to place to place and that's definitely a controlled environment and, you know, potentially we might start looking at, you know, that kind of, you know, control in terms of, you know, if it's going to create an undesirable effect, you know, it might, you know, the thing is, you know, obviously everybody's looking at profitability and how easy it is to grow something and obviously, when it's grown outdoors and all you gotta do is pay, you know, Madam Sunshine for, you know, her goodwill and, you know, Mother Earth for her goodwill, so, and that's all you have to pay, you know, obviously, you can do things for a lot less money than you do indoors, but potentially what we need to do is we've got, we should make sure that we protect the public as well as looking at profitability too.
Well, this is hemp.
Absolutely.
This isn't marijuana.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, even hemp, so maybe hemp isn't that marketable if it costs more, you know?
Right.
That's the whole problem is that it will cost more to grow it indoors, so it might not be as marketable and as, you know.
It really depends, but I will say that this was very high-tech and the quality control was really remarkable. I mean, everybody that worked in that building had passes and, you know, you couldn't open a door if you didn't have the right pass and, and not only do they make sure that their quality is consistent for each of their products, but then they have to send it out to a third party, third independent party to have it tested before they could sell it.
Yeah, because the other thing that I've noticed is that, you know, they're very conscious about infections and what kind of...
Yes.
You know, little insects can actually get into it, so that anytime anything's exposed to the environment, you could get anything just flying by and contaminating your cultivation, so, in that sense, you know, especially if it's gonna be used by, you know, for human consumption, it has to be pure in terms of, obviously, for something that's being used for hemp and not human consumption, it doesn't really matter, but I think that, you know, the majority of the real human consumption marijuana providers will be doing it indoors only because they have to control that insect and that contamination requirement.
I mean, they washed their shoes off before they entered a room, they all had hairnets. I mean, there was, and remarkably, the majority of the workers there all have bachelor's or master's degrees in chemistry and biology, so, I mean, it's not just a fly-by-night, you know, I'm gonna grow pot.
My point was only about the smell.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I know we have built one in Connecticut and what they do to cover up the smell indoors before it gets outside the building.
Yep.
Is incredible and yet, a farmer can grow 100 acres of this, same product, just minus one chemical, with the same smells outside in your backyard and what it does to an entire neighborhood is unbelievable and that was my thing is, you know, they know it smells, that's why there's such a control when it's indoors.
Right. So, that was part of the session, it was discussion on how to control the odor inside and out, so, we'll be looking into that.
And how many free samples did you take?
I took none, because there was none offered. I didn't purchase any either.
Hey.
I do give CBD oil to my dog, though, or I had given it to him and that actually helped him, so.
Don't swear by that.
Yeah, I know, it helped his arthritis, so.
Okay, applications to be...
No, no, no. I'm afraid of approvals.
Okay. Administrative approvals, 310 Hazard Avenue. Oh, that's the old, Hazardville Hotel.
Right.
It's just for a request for a smoothie shop, I believe there was some other retail operation in there prior, so.
Yeah, they had two, one on either side.
Uh, yes, there's also a second request.
What's your desire, ladies and gentlemen?
Well, we approved a salon there not that long ago.
Yeah. I think it would be fine to allow it to be administratively approved.
Go ahead, make mention.
I move that...
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I move that we allow an administrative approval for 310 Hazard Avenue for the smoothie shop.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I have.
Yes.
Just if you can address with the occupants, it's a pretty busy intersection, that they try to keep all the customers in the parking lot instead of parking, you know, running, get a glass of smoothie, pulling off the side of the road right there at the light because it's right on the corner, that would be my only concern there.
They have a parking lot in the back.
I under, as long as the people use it, but if you're in a hurry, you pull off, run in, run out.
So, just the police department put a new parking sign out front.
Something as simple as that.
You're right, because when they come over that hill.
Absolutely.
It's like they're doing 90.
Can we do that?
Only on trikes.
We can talk to the traffic safety.
So, just the police department, the parking sign, okay.
It can be rough.
1793 Hazard Avenue, oh, I'm sorry, did we vote? Yeah, we voted.
No.
All in favor? Get, wait, sorry, sidetracked here. Unanimous, 347 Hazard Avenue.
This is for a nutrition shop that also has smoothies?
Need blue glasses, I got the three, okay.
So...
It's a nutrition shop in Colony Plaza.
I've been told they also sell smoothies over there, too.
Must be the peanuts.
Sorry. No more seeds for him.
Okay. What do you want, ladies and gentlemen?
I'd like to make a motion that we administratively approve SPR 1793, 247 Hazard Avenue.
Second.
Okay, well, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Unanimous. Good. Now it's applications to be received. A new medical office building on 125 and 135 Hazard Avenue.
Yep, that's the same one that was on there from last week. They had requested that they be on the agenda for November. We also received an application for renovations to the JFK School, and we also received an application for, just today, for the driveway off of Elm Street that they wanted on Freshwater State Line Plaza at 130 Elm Street.
I have a question for Lori, since they're supposed to be doing a study on Elm Street, wouldn't we want to wait for that one? I mean...
Yeah, I was just actually remembering that I did not mention that corridor study. We are, we are working towards, I think we, what is the date that we decided? I think it's November 12th. We're going to interview the, I think there's five finalist consultants, so, you know, we will bring it to their attention, should it be approved, but I don't think you need to hold up anything because of it.
Well, you better also have the police department in on this, too.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I'm just thinking, is, once they do this study, things may change, and...
Well, that's always the case, but, I mean, if we know of something, we will let them know, and, you know, we will be on the review committee anyway, so.
All right. Thank you.
Anything further? Well... This one would be all right for the next meeting, but what, what was the other one?
We received the application for JFK renovations, yep.
That's going to be long, and, yeah. Because the high school was, too.
So let's get it on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, if you want to start it, but you got this other one, too. Well, all right.
You got to figure, we got Christmas and everything else coming up, the holidays, we need to get them going.
Oh, yeah. All right, I guess we're, we may not get all the way through it. Maybe take these other two ahead of them, and then start that as a third, if that's what's on there.
Okay.
So we got the guy from Maple Road, Maple Avenue, though, too.
All right. We can, yeah, we can schedule it that way.
But put the school in last.
Yep, we will.
And then, then we can move it if we have to. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's made to adjourn. Any discussion?
Three seconds.
All in favor?
Discussing.
Any opposed? Fine, figure.